I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Thank you, Evy. So I have a few questions for you. What's your favorite subject in school?
Um, library and art.
Library and art, very nice. And what would you like to do when you grow up?
Be a scientist.
A scientist, good for you. We need scientists. And do you have anyone here with you that you'd like to introduce? Anyone special?
My mom and my dad.
Very good. So, of course, this is our newly-elected school board member, Mrs. Miller's daughter. So, Evy, thank you so very much. And this meeting of November 20th is called to order. Madam Superintendent, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we request all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or placed in a silent mode. The first order of business is to accept the agenda for today's meeting. I will entertain a motion and a second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Do we have a vote for the meeting, for the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Are there any members, okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak concerning any of the items on today's agenda? Seeing none, our next order of business is the administration of the oath of office to the school board members elected or reelected in 2018. Ms. Sarah Fortney will receive the oath of office for District 3 from the Honorable Judge Robert Doyle. Ms. Fortney, while you're coming up, you have the opportunity, okay. You have the opportunity at this time to recognize your family and friends and make some brief comments.
Is that how you do it? No, don't push. There we go. I thank you, I'm humbled. I intend to serve to the best of my ability, just like I've promised for the last two years. I will miss my classroom, and I want to thank my family, Mary, Angel, my sister Benny, my neighbor Diane, my sister June, Bina, Mina, and then, of course, Pike, who is live streaming for those who can't make it. I see many family members here. I see kids I taught, a couple of them, and people I've worked with over the years, and I will do my best to do you proud. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, Mrs. Kay Fields will receive the oath of office for District 5 from the Honorable Judge Timothy Kuhn. Good morning.
I, Kay Fields, solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida. That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State. And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of school board member on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations, other powers vested with us, Senior Judge, I pronounce that you are now a duly appointed member of the school.
I've written them down so that I can stay focused. Thank God for his faithfulness. This marks my fifth term serving on the school board, and I've had some interesting campaigns, but nothing compares to the one that I had currently experienced. To having a sitting school board member openly campaign to unseat a sitting board member is just downright unconscionable. Mr. Townsend, if you had just been kind and respectful of my opinions and that of others, you would not have had to campaign so hard to unseat me. Your bullying and blogging, false things about me, these are my comments, and my husband just made me work that much harder to retain this seat. Your tactics and ugliness also helped to refocus me on what was most important. What you, I am having my comments, what you and others meant for my good, for my bad, my God turned it around for my good. All I can say to you is what goes around, comes around, and you will reap what you sow. Duty running me 31-8 states, do not be afraid or discouraged, for the Lord will personally go ahead of you. He will be with you. He will neither fail you nor abandon you. What great assurance was this promise during this period in my life? And on a positive note, thanks to Gao, my rock, I could not have made this journey without you. Thank you for your wise counsel and for encouraging me along the way. You are the smartest man that I know, and I love you. Thanks to the original K team members, Chandra Frederick, Jerome Corbett, Pauline Simmons-Brown, Ashley Troutman, and Joyce Bentley, your belief and faith in me from the very beginning will forever be in my heart. I would never be able to thank you for believing in me and working in my campaign as if it was your very own. I love each of you. I also want to thank our entire campaign team members, those who came midway and worked until the very end. Your outpouring of love and support has meant so much to me and my family. And finally, thanks to the voters for having the confidence and trusting me enough to reelect me to the school board for a fifth term. I promise to continue working hard each and every day for our students, their families, our employees, and our community. I promise to continue being a strong voice for all children and for my family, to your family. Happy Thanksgiving and God's blessing to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Next, Mr. Lynn Wilson will receive the oath of office for District 6 from Bishop Willie Menzey.
I, Lynn Wilson, who solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of school board on which I am now about to enter.
Mr. Wilson, at this time, would you like to recognize any family, friends, and make brief comments?
I would, thank you. I'd just like to thank the voters of Polk County for their confidence in me, and I know I didn't have an opponent this time, and I'm grateful for that. We've made significant progress, I think, in the past few years, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on the board, as well as the superintendent, in continuing to move our school district forward. I would like to recognize my wife, Jeannie, who assisted with the oath. And my son, Tyler, Tyler, if you'd stand up, please. Both of our children were married this year, my daughter this summer, and Tyler's going to be married this weekend, so it's been a busy year for us, but it's been a wonderful year. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Lisa Miller will receive the oath of office for District 7 from Honorable Judge Melissa Gravitt.
I, Lisa Miller, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of school board member on which I am about to enter. So help me God.
At this time, Ms. Miller will recognize family, friends, and make brief comments.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone that's been dedicated to this campaign for over a year. And four years ago, the first time that I ran, that was my Michael that came in, and this is where I'm at. This is a seat that's never been held. We've never had a representative for students with disabilities in Polk County sit on this board. I spent 15 years in that audience, talking about policy and things that should happen. So I thank you for your confidence in electing someone who will speak for all children, no matter their ability, and for all the staff that serve them. Thank you.
Our next order of business is to elect Board Chair. I will use the following procedure. In a moment, I will open the floor for nominations. After board members have had ample time to make nominations, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. Afterward, I will conduct a roll call vote by district, beginning with the first candidate nominated. If there is a majority for the first nominee, the election of the Board Chair will be complete, and we will move to the election of Vice Chair. If there is not a majority in favor for the first nominee, there'll be a roll call vote for the second nominee. This process will continue until a Board Chair is elected by majority vote. I will use the same method to elect the Vice Chair. Are there any questions? Okay. I will now set nominations for Chairman, and nominations do not need a second. Ms. Reynolds.
I would like to nominate Lynn Wilson.
Are there any others? Okay. At this time, we only have one nomination for the Chair. I would like to ask for a motion to elect Lynn Wilson.
I would like to make a motion to elect Mr. Lynn Wilson as Polk County School Board Chair.
Second.
Okay. I will now conduct, well, there's no need to conduct a roll call vote, since that's the only one. That makes that one easy for me. So there's a majority of the vote in favor of the first nominee. I will now move to the election of Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for election of Vice Chair?
I would nominate Lori Cunningham.
We recognize Mr. Townsend, nomination of Lori Cunningham. Any other nominations? This is going to be great today. I would like to entertain, as we only have one nominee, Lori Cunningham as Vice Chair. I would like to close the nominations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's no need to have a vote, as we have the majority. Now we have our Chair as Lynn Wilson, and our Vice Chair as Lori Cunningham. The next item that we have before you is a designation of time, date, and a place for the school board meetings. I recommend that the board hold the work sessions in the superintendent's conference room on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of each month at 9:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. Respectfully, a board meeting on the 4th Tuesday of the month at 5:00 p.m. to be held in the school board auditorium at 1915 South Flora Avenue, Florida, Barto, Florida. I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I actually have a little discussion. Want to throw a little wrinkle into this. One of the things I raised last year was the idea of some informal board meetings. I'd like to schedule one for December 2nd, which I believe is a Sunday afternoon at 2:30. It'd be, you know, it's not a mandatory meeting, but it's a chance for the board to get together as a whole and just talk. I would specifically like to talk about constituent service in that meeting, but the idea is generally to create the custom of getting together outside of the pressures of the normal workday, so we can just talk and get to know each other a little better and get to know where we're coming from. I understand if everybody can't attend those, there are going to be times that I can't attend them. I also understand that 2:30 on a Sunday afternoon, it might be better to have it in evening, but I figured we'd start somewhere. So I don't know if the board is amenable to that. I just wanted to go ahead and put that one down. I'm not even sure if this is exactly the right way to do it, but.
After we close the meeting, we'll yield that back. Or do I yield it now, Wes, to the Chair?
Let's see, normally, once the Chair and Vice have been selected, you can pass the gavel to the new Chair.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, do you want to address the discussion on that one?
Sure, so we have some discussion. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you 100%. My only thought would be to try to do it on an evening of a weekday rather than Sundays, particularly at the Christmas season. We've got a lot of different things going on with family and friends, but yes, I think it's a great idea, but I would like to see it during a weekday at some point. So if you could do it on December 2nd in the evening.
That's on Sunday, so.
I mean, 3rd, 4th, whatever, whatever that Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine. You want to say the, what's the 4th?
Hold on, let me look. Tuesday's the 4th?
We're not meeting that day, right? We don't have a meeting.
No, we don't. We don't meet till the 11th, so.
Yeah, you want to set something at 6?
Sure, sure. I can do that.
See how that works.
How others feel.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, and Mr. Townsend, Ms. Fortney.
I agree. I believe we need different times for meetings, because it's very hard for our employees to make any kind of input when they are in the middle of the workday.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. I guess, Mr. Bridges, my question would be if we did that, could we do that here at the district?
Certainly. There are several ways that you can do this. I don't think there's any one that is the right way. The only wrong way is to do it out of the sunshine. So if you want it to be a meeting of the school board where there's an agenda and minutes taken, that's easy enough. If it's an informal meeting, you've only got one or two board members present, there's not going to be any formal action. All that would be necessary would be for the meeting to be noticed and open to the public. But if it is going to be a regularly established feature, a meeting of the school board, I would suggest go ahead and do those minimal things that are required in Chapter 286 for public meetings. Go ahead and have someone present to record and take minutes. But, you know, once you've established it, under law and policy, you can call a meeting, the superintendent can call a meeting, the board by a majority vote can call a meeting. So if a majority of the board wants it, you can establish it, you can have it whenever you want to, and if the board asks for it, I'm sure the superintendent would accommodate with meeting space.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. And we have some other folks who'd like to address this. Bear with me just one moment, but I want to get back to Mr. Townsend. I think what I heard you say was you were suggesting an informal meeting, which would probably just require public notice. Is that correct? Did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, in speaking with Wes about this, I think it's probably likely we would need to tape it or have somebody be able to take. I don't want to have a staff member there taking minutes, I think that's a waste of time, but we should probably need to tape that, so that people can listen to it. I don't expect to have a formal agenda in this sense, and I'm not going to be running these. I mean, this is just an idea, you know, but the idea is that we could all come together, spend some time outside of the pressure of a work session, where you've got 15-minute increments to discuss things. My idea for the first meeting, and this is just an idea, is to talk about how we're going to address constituent concerns, and how we might divide that up amongst ourselves in a way that's efficient and useful, and then how that might play into how staff wants it done. You know, I don't, staff is welcome to come, obviously, but I think it's a meeting for us and for the public, who wants to come to tell us things. I think we'd have to kind of work out the structure on how we talk to the public. This'll be a little bit experimental. So one of the reasons is to just do one, see how it goes, and kind of learn from there is my idea, and if the board's up for that, I'm happy to do that on, was it, it was Tuesday, the 4th, from like 6 to 8, you know.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we want to start with something informal. It would require public notice, it would require that we tape it, but no action will be taken.
Right. Under no circumstances do I ever envision action being, this is like a whiteboard session.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Miller?
Just in my workings with the city, they added these meetings about two years ago, and they refer to them as policy meetings, but it's just an informal session. They do them twice a month, and they review things that may be possible agenda items, but there is no formality to the meeting, it's just an open discussion. So I think that would be something very positive for our board to do. December 4th, I'm in Department of Education, but I will be back for that meeting. I'll leave a little early to make it back.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Any further discussion? So the motion.
Just to add to the minutes that I currently have, see on the schedule, there's a quarterly sales tax oversight committee meeting that same evening.
How about, no, how about the 3rd, on Monday? I mean, that's, no?
I can't do Monday.
All right. I feel like if we wait till the 1st of the year, we'll never start, so I want to get one started. How about Wednesday?
I already have it. I actually have it.
The 6th, there's the Lake Wales thing. Oh, has it? Well, that's, well, at some point, we're just going to have to do one.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion that we can probably have Susan send out some possible available dates? Because it looks like with everything coming, we only have those couple of weeks, there's a lot of things going on.
Okay. So is there any further discussion?
That's fine, we'll table it for dates, that's fine.
So the motion on the floor is to hold work sessions on the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays in the superintendent's conference room at 9:00 and 12:30 p.m. respectively, and school board meetings on Tuesdays at 5:00 in the school board auditorium located at 915 South Flora Avenue. That's the motion on the floor. As Mr. Bridges indicated, we can add these other meetings as we go along, and we'll send out some notices and see if we can gather some times where folks can get together. So we have a motion, we've had discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of resolution 2018-2019-11 authorizing banks to honor cash warrants signed by the Board Chair and Secretary to the school board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of resolution 2018-2019-11.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So I see some lights on. Were those carryovers from the last discussion, or did folks have additional comments?
Absent minded.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is approval of resolution 2018-2019-11 authorizing banks to honor cash warrants signed by the Board Chair and Secretary to the school board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the proceedings of the school board meetings, that those proceedings will be held in accordance with Roberts Rules of Order revised and rules of the Administrative Procedures Act. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, so the motion on the floor is that school board proceedings will be held in accordance with Roberts Rules of Order revised and rules of the Administrative Procedures Act for the State of Florida. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, Madam Superintendent, did you have any comments or discussion?
The only comment I do have is happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Be safe and enjoy your family and friends.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bridges?
Mr. Chair, just to say congratulations to our new board members and to our reelected board members. I'm sure that we will face our challenges in the next year, but we will do it with grace and artistry.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I too would like to congratulate our two new board members, Ms. Fortney and Mrs. Miller, to congratulate Mrs. Fields on her reelection, and to say that we all look forward to working with our new colleagues and moving our school district forward. And this time, we'll have school board members' comments. Mr. Townsend?
All right, yeah, just very briefly. First, I'd like to congratulate Miss Fields on her reelection. It was a very hard-fought campaign. I just want to tell everybody, I believe in political competition. I believe it makes us all better, believe it forces us to think about things. I welcome anybody who decides to run against me in 2020. That's part of the process. It's not about us. It's not about what. It's not about what we're entitled to or what, you know, it's, these seats are not personal seats. They're the public seats, and the public deserves to be competed for. I make no apologies for that, and I ask for no one not to compete with me, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, too, would like to congratulate Ms. Fortney and Ms. Miller in your campaign and joining us on the Polk County School Board. It's a wonderful group of individuals. You'll find we have an awesome staff. I think we've accomplished a lot in the past few years, and we're just going forward, truly, to try to make this district the best that it can possibly be. And as Mr. Townsend said, it's not about us, it's about the children that we serve, and I think you both have hearts for that. So thank you for being a part of this school district, and I'm very excited to get to know each of you and to work with you as we move forward. And to Ms. Fields, congratulations on your reelection. I'm excited to continue to work with you and learn from your wisdom and years of experience. So, and everyone, please have a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Kids, get some rest, and as I always say, read, 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 over the break. And we have the most wonderful library cooperative in the state of Florida, and you can have books brought to your library closest to your home. So kids, read, read, read. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Fortney?
Again.
Again.
Well, I definitely look forward to working with the board. I look forward to listening to the folks that put me up here, which were quite a few people. And I plan on working with the superintendent and her staff. I look forward to moving our district forward, just like I've done in my classroom, move them forward, and with the same caring heart and with the same perspective that I've always had. And I thank you all, and I look forward to it. And Ms. Fields, congratulations. Ms. Miller, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a quick question first, because we have FSBA next week. Do we, I know Hazel was our representative on board of directors. Did we have an alternate?
I think, I think
Is that you, Ms. Cunningham? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I couldn't remember if it was you or Tim, so I wanted to make sure we had someone.
The meeting is the alternate until such time as Mr. Wilson appoints the new liaison at the December board meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. I just couldn't remember if it was you or Tim, and I wasn't sure if we lost them both. Congratulations, Ms. Fortney and Ms. Miller. We're so excited to have you up here with us, and congratulations as well, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Fields. And I think just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, and thanks for asking about that. We did have some discussion about that to make sure that was covered, so we appreciate you bringing that up. Ms. Fields?
I would just like to congratulate Ms. Fortney and also Ms. Miller. We are here, and if we can help you in any way as you get ready to transition into your new position, we'll hopefully be able to help you in whatever way we can. And I failed to acknowledge my family this morning. I apologize for that. I want to acknowledge, my husband already has been acknowledged, but I have my daughter, Jazz, stand, Jazz, please, and I have my son and my daughter-in-law and my grandbaby. I think she's sleeping over there. And I have Ms. Tony, who's our godmother to my children. Ms. Tony, thank you for being here. And there are many others in the audience as well, but I want to acknowledge those. And my sister, I don't think she was able to make it this morning. All right, thank you.
Well, let's have them stand, so we can give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mrs. Miller?
Once again, I want to thank the people that are here today, my friends, family, everywhere, from Sean Kinsey, who we call my cousin sometimes, to Tasha, who helped me walk, and Sarah, who led Winter Haven, and Dana and Carmella. Woo, not going to get emotional, but I appreciate this opportunity. I appreciate the superintendent, that her motto is students first. I am here to represent all students. My only agenda is moving this board forward and being the voice of students, all students, and the staff of Polk County. So I look forward, you know, I tell people I've been in this a long time. I've been, you know, this is a higher honor for me than any governor appointment, anything I've done, because I know that I can make the impact right here in Polk County, and I did not campaign all that, all those years not to make an impact. So I'm going to look for the guidance of our board members. Ms. Fields here, I appreciate your campaign and the fact that you have years of experience that I can learn from. And Mr. Wilson, we've walked the campaign together in previous years, so I will rely on you and Lori and everyone here. I appreciate your time and your energy and the fact that you will help us along this journey of becoming new board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. We had a great crowd. Okay, yes, ma'am. We had a great crowd. Thank you all for being here this morning and witnessing this very special occasion. Mrs. Cunningham, did you have some additional comments?
I did. I was remiss in not congratulating you on your reelection. Since you didn't have that same campaign thing going on as the others, I apologize. Let me congratulate you on being reelected unopposed to the school board seat. You've been an awesome chairman this past year. We look forward to your continued leadership as our chairman, and I know you're going to continue to do an awesome job, so I just wanted to be sure to say that publicly.
Thank you. When Mrs. Fields was chair, she asked me to take the lead on the half-cent sales tax referendum, and that was incredibly time-consuming. There were so many folks, and I know I've already thanked everyone for their help, but I'm so grateful I didn't have a campaign, because I was too busy trying to get that off the ground. And it was interesting, as we went through that process, there's so many people who want to be involved, and they want to do it their way, you know, there are things you do. The political action committee had hired a consultant, and the consultant would come to Alice Hunt and I and say, what do I do? We have all these folks telling us what we should do and how we should do it. We said, you're the consultant, you're the expert, we're going to follow your lead. And they told us we had the highest pass rate of any referendum in the state of Florida, so I'm very grateful for that.
Wow.
And I think that says something about listening to the experts, too. Are there any other comments from the board members? Okay, so at this time, if anyone would like to come forward from the audience and offer comments, we welcome you to do that. Anyone like to come forward from the audience and offer comments? If there's no further business for this board, this meeting is adjourned.